Everyone. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. On October 22nd, 2024, and ask our city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Gess.
Present.
Commissioner Henderson.
Present.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Bray.
Present. I would ask Commissioner Henderson to do the invocation, and we'll remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh Lord, our Lord, how excellent is your name and all the earth. God, we again are in your presence, and we thank you for the state that you've given us, and we thank you for the blessings that we right now enjoy. God, we thank you for the privilege that you've given us to serve this community, and our prayer is that you would give us wisdom and discernment and insight at decisions that might be made that will glorify you ultimately, but also affect positively positively the masses. We pray of God for our city. We pray for those who work with the city, and it's in the name of Jesus the Christ that we pray, and we thank you now, God, for everything. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first order of business tonight is I have a proclamation. Yes, I have a proclamation almost every commission meeting, but I have a proclamation tonight. It's an important one to recognize Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month. We have representatives here from Paducah Cooperative Ministry, Kentucky Care, the Paducah City School System. Here are folks that deal with this every single day, and I hope that they will accept this on behalf of the community, so I'll move over here. Whereas hunger and homelessness continue to be a serious challenge for many individuals and families of all ages, races, and backgrounds. And whereas in the city of Paducah, many residents struggle daily with poverty, food insecurity, and lack of affordable housing. And whereas local organizations, including shelters, food pantries, and countless volunteers work to combat these crises by providing critical services, job training, and support. And whereas we recognize the dedication of volunteers and organizations who work year round to support our most vulnerable neighbors. And whereas it is vital for us as a community to come together to raise awareness and support initiatives that work toward ending hunger and homelessness. And now therefore, I, George P. Bray, Mayor of Paducah, hereby proclaim November 2024 as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month in the city of Paducah, and I encourage all residents to recognize the impact of hunger and homelessness in our community and to engage in opportunities for education, service, and advocacy during this month and beyond. Okay? Got to come up?
Only your name was on the sheet.
Someone want to play?
One more coming, hold on.
And let me just say this, if I can. I just, I did an interview with WPSD right before, right before the meeting, and they were asking me about the city's role in homelessness and, and you know, there's been a, ever since I got elected four years ago, I've been on monthly or quarterly calls with the homelessness cohort, and, and what you all are working on is very challenging, and I recognize that. And sometimes we think we're not making any progress, but you know, without the work that you all are doing, we'd be a whole lot worse off. And I know that Paducah Cooperative Ministry is getting ready to start construction on a, some sort of, we think, homeless facility. I don't want to give that away, but I think, well.
You're wanting to.
I'm not the only person that's.
You want to talk about cash.
Okay. But, and there's another organization talking about, talking about that as well, so we know the need is there. We have Salvation Army and Goodwill both working on different, you know, different elements of it, so I just want to thank you all for the work that you're doing. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Go save the world.
Start in Paducah.
Okay, we have a representative from Hub International here to make a presentation on, he's our benefits advisor, and talking about the city of Paducah's benefits.
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor. Commissioners, happy to be here with you all tonight. We have the presentation we do annually around the overall benefits. I need to steal this mouse. There we go. All right, great. Yes, I'm DJ Story with Hub International, happy to be here with you all to go through the overall annual benefits workshop that we do around, and briefing to you all with the employee benefits. We'll talk a little bit about the historical plan cost, just as a reminder, kind of the basic structure of health insurance and funding with a self-funded health plan that the city of Paducah operates. Talk about the projected costs we see remaining this year and the budgeting and escrow funds for 2025, allocation budget for city employees, and then additional recommendations and changes regarding the other plans and benefits for city employees. As a, as a reminder, when we are self-funding in healthcare, like the city is, there's three main components of that, opposed to kind of the general fully insured health insurance benefit where you pay a premium to an insurance carrier, and then they pay the claims on your behalf, and then you just wait till the next year, and then they give you a rate increase on an annual basis. When we're self-funding, we pay an administrator or a carrier for the use of a network, an administrative charge, that's going to be the smallest piece of the pie that we pay when it comes to self-funding. The next portion is stop-loss insurance, that's that overall coverage if we have large losses either on an individual basis from one individual member that has a high claim or high claims, or kind of umbrella or aggregate coverage if we have a lot of folks that have claims in a given year that stops our losses from the city's health fund. And then the, as you see that blue part of that pie chart, the Pac-Man portion is the claims that we actually pay. So the majority of the, the payments that are going out for the city are the claims that each individual, employee, spouse, and dependent on the city's plans are having. Now, from a self-funding standpoint, traditionally, this is kind of how it breaks out in the city's net costs. Seventy-five percent of the city's net cost is getting paid by the city's funds. Ten percent is coming from JSA, Joint Sewer Agency, that is on the city's health plan, and they pay a portion of premiums in order to be on that health plan. Employees pay about eleven percent of the total costs overall, and then traditionally we have those stop-loss reimbursements. When those claims exceed, we get that payment back from those insurance carriers. That's kind of how it all breaks down. So historical net plan cost, I'd just like to show this for the city's benefit is the amazing amount of consistency that we've had over the course of years. You see some ups and downs through this bar chart on the net cost the city has paid, but overall, you could draw a line through it, and we'd be very consistent, more consistent than, than many other clients and, and other folks that I see from a benchmarking perspective. So if you look at the projected costs that we have in 2024, we're looking to be right around 2.2 million in net costs, better, or worse off than we were in 2023, which is a really kind of an anomaly claims year, and, but better than we were back in, in 2022 from a net cost perspective. So how does this measure up? Now, this is a chart that, that graphs that same information on a per-employee-per-year basis, and shows that from an average cost to the city, you're looking about $7,600 that you're paying on a per-employee-per-year. How does that measure up? Well, Kaiser Family Foundation puts out statistics annually that say, what are the average cost of premiums? Like I talked about in the fully insured space, we're not fully insured, but if you're kind of comparing to the, to the, to the overall data, that's average cost of single coverage that folks are paying on a per-employee-per-year basis is over nine grand, and family coverage at, at 25 grand. So just from a, just kind of a quick snapshot, we've got better overall costs for our coverages than, than the rest of the benchmark. So what does that mean for us in 2024? Our projections say that from admin, stop-loss, and claims, the budget was around 2.7 for this year. The current funding was, that we had in relation to the rates and premiums that were being paid was close to, or just under 3.1. So the need was, we, we had enough to cover the cost that we would have within the claims and, and plans that we had this year because we were coming underneath what we expected when it comes to the claims that we had in 2024. So the escrow balance and the premiums more than met that need. When we look into 2025, from a contractual perspective, so when the insurance carriers are saying what we expect your claims to be based on inflationary trend, medical and RX trend moving up in the given year, and cost of admin and stop-loss, we expect that your total cost would be about 3.2. I think that they are conservative in this, but again, the majority of that's the claims that we will only pay if we actually have those claims. What this transitions to on that left side from that expected standpoint is that we would need funding to offset for that claims, but we exceeded that in our budget year this year, so I feel like from an expected basis, we're right on track with where we should be. And then from a maximum standpoint, so that's, the wheels fall off, we have a lot of claims unexpectedly that come in, not just one individual member. I think this is important to note when we're self-funding. We are protected if we have a claimant that just has a very huge and unexpected claims year, or a couple of claimants. This maximum projection is we have 10, 12 claimants, 20, you know, like we have a lot that are coming in underneath our specific deductible at 175,000 that are coming in and increasing the cost of that plan. So the likelihood of that is very low, but that's when I, I would just want to show from a maximum perspective, that's where that would be at.
So if I could just ask a quick question, but that escrow balance.
Yes.
Just clear, clear up what that.
So that is, so yes, great question, Mayor. So over the years, because we've, the finance team and HR team within the city has done a very good job of meeting on a monthly basis, seeing where we're at and budgeting appropriately. When we've had those good years, claims-wise, we haven't just said, well, that's great, we, we can, we can move on about that. It's putting that money into escrow because we know that the bad years will come, and that we know that when they do come, we don't want to have to make a knee-drip reaction and have to charge money back to city employees to offset that cost, or make benefits worse for city employees. So we built that reserve up so that that can manage through any of those harder claims years that are inevitable.
So essentially, we have a year's worth of claims.
Yes.
In a balance, you know?
Yeah. No, yeah, exactly right. Any other questions on this? Yes?
Just regarding the stop-loss, I know it looks like we're paying about 1,300 per employee for the stop-loss coverage?
I can tell you the exact number.
It's like 109 a month, I think, per employee. If that, I mean, that's what I read.
Sure.
But we don't, I mean, that may not be as important, but I guess the question I've got, I don't know, exactly how many employees do we have? That's on the insurance program?
DJ can give you the number. Yes, so the contract, specific contract, we're basing this on 286 employees.
Historically, we budget more than that, but we carry, typically, we carry right around 300, and some of them don't take it because they have other insurance, and so that's where it comes to that.
Okay, so with escrow balance of 3 million, and we're paying, say, over $300,000 for the stop-gap.
Yep.
Insurance, I'm just wondering if we ever reach a point when we can raise that escrow balance and reduce the stop, or reduce or eliminate stop-gap insurance?
Yeah, so great point, Commissioner. I think that over the years, we've evaluated where the cost benefit is on increasing that, what they call specific deductible. So right now, you're right, we're paying $109 per employee per month for that specific stop-loss coverage. That's for $175,000 for each individual member on the plan. And over, through our renewal process with HR and finance team, we look at, what's the cost benefit if we take that to 200,000, 225,000, right? Because you're right, if we have the balance and we can offset those claims, why pay for more insurance? Let's pay for less. I'm in 100% agreement. Yeah, so you would never, I wouldn't think you'd ever want to eliminate it, but there is, there's reason to move that number up, right? And increase that deductible amount. When we've looked at it for this year, it's kind of one of those situations where you go, okay, well, if we have one claim, two claims, does the offset in premium meet the, is it worth?
Yeah.
Is it worth it, right? So we do look at that, and the other part is, is that kind of once you move that up, you never move it back. So if we're in a good claims year, our stop-loss insurance is a, as a relatively neutral cost change for this year, the thought process being, let's not take on more liability if we don't necessarily have to. In a bad year, we might be forced to move that number up, but I think it's a fair point and something that we definitely review.
But what you're saying is you're, you're analyzing that.
Yes.
On an annual basis and giving us, and we're having discussions about how best to do that.
Yes, yeah, that goes through that renewal process. We receive quotes every time we're going through that stop-loss where we're seeing, okay, what's 175, what's, what's 200, what's 225? And it's just a question of, is it worth it for us to reduce our premium and increase that liability?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yes, of course. Great question, great point, because I think it's important. I'm not a very good insurance salesman because I try to tell people to buy less insurance if they can, but you know, sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't. Historical allocation, so another point that I like to look at from a benchmarking perspective is that same Kaiser Family Foundation survey from 2024, what they do is what workers are contributing for their insurance. And so this takes from 2014 to 2019 to 2024. You see a big jump in the employee contribution in that 2014 to 2019 years, about 25% increase in overall employee contributions, less so in the last five years. The thing that's impressive to me is for our investor plan, even without wellness, that employee can have insurance coverage for their family at $4,692, whereas whenever in 2014, that number was at 4,823. So we're beating benchmarks from 10 years ago with the, the rates and costs for employees to be able to gain coverage. I think sometimes that does get lost when things have been status quo for so long, but I do want to point out the employees are of the city have, have got a great benefits program and, and very low cost comparatively. So that brings us to the allocation. This is the last, you know, 14, 15 years of allocation amounts. You see both the city allocation, the available wellness credits that they can earn, the insurance premium overall, and then the net available that they can put into an HSA if they're on that investor plan. That has not changed for many years, and for 2025, based on escrow and budgets, we, our recommendation is to keep that again the same for 13 straight years. Unheard of, it's been unheard of for the last few years, and the fact that employees can rely that any, any amount of premiums they're paying is not changing is, is incredible.
Why is that?
It's a couple of reasons. One, we've got a very good demographic base within the city. That means that although we will have high claimants from year to year, we don't have a, a population that is just increasingly getting worse than us from a risk perspective. I think that part of that is also available in the amount of dedication and money that's happened towards our wellness programs and chronic disease management. You don't see those things in a, just one year to the next, but what you do see is that over time, if that focus and intention is there, that the folks that have those chronic conditions are at least getting the preventive care that's necessary to keep those in check. And I think the other thing is budgeting. When we've had those higher claims years, because we've had that escrow balance, we haven't had to go, oh, we're going to have to make a large-scale change here, we're up to increase that premium. So financially, it's just, it's a, it's a better process than a lot of folks do, so.
You think our experience is age-driven? I mean, is, it's, when you look at the average age of.
Yeah.
A city employee?
Yeah, and I mean, we work with a lot of different public employers and public entities, and, and the city is just, it continually runs in just a very consistent fashion. That can always change, I don't have a crystal ball on the claims that we will have, but right now, it's just been consistent for a number of years.
Is this comparatively low to other cities, government entities?
Yes, yeah, 100%, and, and that goes back to that, just those national benchmarks, too. You're, you're in better stead than those as well.
DJ, when you're talking about benchmarks, the, how does our wellness program benchmark against others?
In the top 1%. No one else that I know of puts as much dollars and emphasis in their wellness program as the city has done for many, many years. That wellness programs are one that, I mean, it's hard to get folks engaged in those types of things. There's a direct correlation to how much money someone can receive and how much engagement they can have. I think it also goes back to, you know, HealthWorks for the last couple of years has done a very good job of driving additional engagement, and it's hard when the plans haven't changed and the city employees have, you have a lot of people that have been here for a 10-year amount of time that can get stagnant. It's about driving and seeing what the next thing we can do to drive that engagement, and it takes work, but I think they've done a very good job.
Thank you.
The only piece of plan changes that I'll mention today, that one is required with the, with the IRS. Last year, they did this, and, and they're doing it again this year, is a, is a HSA minimum deductible. So the health savings account that is available on that high deductible plan, that investor plan that the majority of employees do take on the city's health plan, that IRS, that's a minimum deductible that it has to be at for that to be HSA qualified, for folks to be able to contribute into that. And so they moved that number from $3,200 individual deductible to a $3,300 individual deductible, and then from a $6,400 family deductible to $6,600. That then mirrors on the out-of-pocket maximum, so members can't be, you know, once they exceed that deductible, they basically are not having any additional costs from a healthcare perspective unless they're going out of network. And then we just mirror that out-of-pocket maximum on the elite plan because the intention is, is that both plans, you're not going to be worse off in one versus the other, so just to mirror that on that elite plan. Yes, sir.
Regarding the HSA, it looks like it stayed the same level for the last several years?
Yes.
What, is that a very costly to raise that?
So any contributes, the way that the city's allocation works today is that we say, okay, here's the total amount of premium that we're charging, here's the total city allocation that any employee can receives, and then here's your potential available that you can get from your wellness credits. So when you see that 1,352 available for the wellness, available for the HSA, that's really just, hey, we have this allocation, you can earn within the wellness, this is the amount that can go into that. So if you wanted to increase what the city's contribution is for employees to say, hey, you can have more that could go into that HSA amount, again, that's just, talks about increasing that allocation. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Due diligence, so I think it's important over time, and we don't tend to market every single year because the intention, the city has ran very consistently, and we, we see that there's not, if there's not an intention to change, as long as we feel like we're in a right, the right spot for our cost, we don't, we do not market every year, but we did market this year to a United Healthcare option. In the state of Kentucky, you have two basic networks, you have Anthem and you have United. Humana recently exited the marketplace for employer-based insurance, so you don't really have anybody else. When we marketed this, overall, the administrative costs were largely similar. There's, you know, pennies and a few dollars here or there on one versus the other. The biggest difference is the network. So when we look at this, the, obviously, when we talk about the biggest portion of the pie is the claims, part of that comes from medical, part of that comes from pharmacy. The medical claims, you're getting an overall discount by going to an Anthem network versus a United network. When we evaluate this based on the gross medical claims we have in the last few years, based on what United Healthcare said their average discount being around 58, 59%, and where we were averaging with Anthem roughly 68%. And you talk about the gross medical claims we have, that's roughly a quarter million to $450,000 difference depending on the year and the claims. So it's not an exact science, but what we see is largely we're getting a better deal and better discounts with Anthem, and that comes back to real dollars to the city and to the employees because they're going to pay less when they have those costs. We also, when we evaluate this, looked at alternative prescription options. Prescriptions can be very costly, the rate of inflation on those is probably plus of 15 to 20% versus medical being around eight to 10%. So prescriptions are outpacing medical inflation. We see there being opportunity there. We took this to market on a couple of pharmacy benefit managers to see, okay, what's available, and we saw roughly about savings of a quarter million dollars, maybe a little bit more by using others. We talked with Anthem, and based on a overall hub contract, so this is nationally with Hub International and some things that have been negotiated on that level, we got them to revise the contract for the city that we believe should come in around a quarter million dollars of savings or rebates, kind of a combination of both savings and rebates back to the plan that the city will then get back into.
Where will that show up? I mean, that's a big number.
It is a big number. So the way it'll work is, is that in some ways, the contract itself, so the cost that we're paying for prescriptions, each prescription that comes out will be slightly less, in other ways, it will be the rebates received. So when pharmacy is charged to a plan, typically, there's a rebate associated if it's a brand-name drug or a special, what they call specialty drug, and those numbers vary. Right now, the way that the city's plan works is that you just get an admin credit, so that administrative charge, that smaller piece of the pie we talked about, Anthem said, we're going to give you an admin credit worth 30 some odd dollars PEPM, and that's going to roughly offset the rebates that we received from all of your prescriptions. When we renegotiated this contract, we said, okay, we're going to, the admin credits are great for front-end savings, but then I want you to look at, based on the total rebates you get back, and then make sure that we're getting that pricing and getting those rebate checks back to the city. So part of it will be in the actual cost of the claims that we receive back in, and part of it will be actually rebate checks that will come back to the city that will say, hey, this is what we're, you're owed based on the new contract.
Could we have given United the prescription contract?
We, so this is the, that we, we renegotiated with Anthem on, because they needed to get back in line. I think I stepped on a cord, so apologies. So we renegotiated with Anthem, but the other thing about Anthem is that Anthem knows that they're the 800-pound gorilla in the room, and what they actually did say is, is that if you wanted to get a different PBM, we're not going to allow you to move that pharmacy benefit and continue with our network. benefit and continue with our network. They wanted to keep that in-house. So kind of the meeting in the middle, I think we actually, best of both worlds, we continue to receive the Anthem.
We're going to, technology's going to take over.
Yes, yeah, for many years. We worked together and now we're having to do it for. Maybe the cord shouldn't be. So best of both worlds, we get the Anthem overall discount we see as being a better deal, and we get Anthem to go ahead and give us a better deal on prescriptions. At the end of the day, I think that's, it's always on our mind, okay, is the prescription cost going to outweigh the amount of discount that we're getting on the network? And that's when that, that math flips and we go, okay, it's worth it for us to actually move to a different carrier. Thanks, Eric. Move to a different carrier and, and get a different pharmacy benefit. Great questions there. Any other thoughts?
Just the final question, this $250,000 to $300,000 that we reduced, I mean, I know you said where it would come back, but at the end of the, next year, where's that gonna, that'll show, show up in the, in perhaps a reduction in the total outlays?
Yeah, it, it, I think what we'll show is that whenever we get back in those rebate checks, we'll keep track of those because it'll be a new line item, and we'll show that against the cost of claims that we have. So when we're looking at next year, we'll look at a net cost information, but what I'll probably do is have a new slide for you next year that'll show your prescription costs, and then the rebates we receive back to show how that's reduced down in, in those, in those costs and claims. Because it's one thing to promise that you're going to get it, it's another thing to actually see it whenever it, you know, you don't have to pay for those things. Other renewing plans for this year, Delta Dental did have a 3% increase. We have not had an increase on the dental insurance in many years, based on utilization there and justified. We did go ahead and have them go ahead and lock that for us for two years, so we can guarantee that we wouldn't have any kind of increase next year. When we're talking about the health insurance versus the dental, we're talking about very small dollars in the grand scheme of things. Anthem Vision, no change. Flores, HRA, FSA, HSA Administration, there was no change in that. From the Hub Advisory Agreement, we did seek out a 5% increase to fees. We haven't changed our fee structure for the city since 2018, and we hope we got you a quarter million dollars back, so.
What do we pay you annually?
82, or right now it's like $78,000 with our data analytics and then advisory fee all in.
Okay.
If that's not enough, you can rewrite.
He just went up 5%.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah. Some statistics we talked about from a wellness perspective, again, back to the overall engagement that we've seen with HealthWorks. 6,500 messages to city employees, 250-plus one-on-one visits, 93%, 93% utilization within the MoveWell app. We don't have really anything that gets 93% engagement, so people are in there. I think that's a direct relation to the fact that they can receive dollars from being engaged in that. So it's, it's, again, it's about the culture, it's also about the program. 102 telehealth visits and, and 120-plus employees are doing the in-person stretching that HealthWorks rolled out as well. So I believe that's a true success story. So our recommendation for 2025 is to hold existing rates and allocations, renew the insurance service agreements that we've got in place, both with Anthem Administration and Vision, Voya Stop Losses, our stop-loss insurer, Delta Dental, our Hub contract, Mutual of Omaha Life and LTD, there was no requirement because we're in a rate hold with that one, but to continue to any of those benefits along with Colonial, and then the HealthWorks contracts as well. And that is all I have for you. So questions do you have? And happy to answer anything I can.
That's great.
I don't have any other questions. I did one, I did make a note, you know, for the benefit of our city employees, I mean, it looks like to me, I mean, if I read your slides right, employees themselves are only paying 11% of the total cost of their healthcare premiums.
Yep.
Or their healthcare experience, you know, so.
Yep.
I think that's something that we all, you know, need to keep in mind. So the fact that we're managing this program, you know, well, is keeping premiums low for employees, and even within that, that universe, employees are only, only paying 11% of the cost, so.
And then I want to say, the last time I checked, the national average on that is around 80% employer, 20% employee. So again, it's another spot that the city's doing more than the average.
Yep.
Great.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, city manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, none this evening.
We have no public comments. Okay, the first, first thing I have on the agenda is I wanted to present an award to somebody that's here tonight. Jeff Cantor, you may or may not be aware of this, but I'd like to honor your service with the city, and I just talk a little bit about your background for the benefit of everybody out there. Jeff's a graduate of the University of Tennessee, and he's been employed by PFGW for 14 years and, and has served as the principal since 2018. Jeff's an architect and he's a member of the American Institute of Architects, National Council of Architectural Registration Boards, and, and many other areas that he participates in. In our community, he's actively involved in our community, and he's served in a number of capacities. He was in leadership at Paducah, 1819. He's been, he's served on Main Street Committees in the past. He's been service, serving on the Main Street Board currently since 2017 and is, is currently the board chair. He also serves on the Columbia Art House Board since 2019, and he's a member of the Tennessee Riverline Committee here in Paducah, McCracken County. A member of the Kiwanis Club, a member of Lone Oak, deacon at Lone Oak First Baptist Church. And Jeff, I just wanted, Jeff stepping down as our chairman of the Main Street, we're going to hear, we're going to hear a presentation, but I just wanted to take a minute to honor your service and present you with a Duke of Paducah Award. And then before we go into the consent agenda, I just wanted to make an announcement. We've been working on a new hotel. As everybody knows, one that's going in next to the Holiday Inn, and we haven't been able to share what the brand of the hotel is going to be, but we now know for sure that it is going to be a Marriott Aloft. And the Marriott Aloft brand, there's one in Louisville. It's, it's a very, I've stayed in a couple of them. It's got a very cool vibe, very open atmosphere in there. It's one of the new brands of hotels, and I think will serve this community very well. I think people will be very interested in staying there, and so I think, Commission, we're all very excited about that.
That's great. Having a Marriott downtown is.
So we'll move to the consent agenda. Consent agenda and items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member soul requests, in which event the item will be, will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The city clerk will read the items recommended for approval unless any commissioner has an item they'd like removed.
Just G, I have a quick question on G.
Okay, would you like, okay.
I can do it whenever. Ask my question.
How would you like to handle that?
Let's take it, move it to, just after we do the consent agenda, then we can.
Okay. So we'll remove G and then discuss it. Okay. I'll ask the city clerk to please read them, skipping G.
Approved minutes for the October 3, 2024 Joint Special Court Meeting between the Paducah Board of Commissioners and the McCracken County Fiscal Court and the October 8, 2024 Board of Commissioners Meeting. Receive and file documents, personnel actions, appointment of Denny Roof and Michelle Murphy to the Civic Beautification Board to replace Monica Philer and Dee Gregory respectively, who resigned. Said terms shall expire July 1, 2027. A municipal order adopting a contract modification number seven to the construction contract with Midstates Construction, Inc. for the Robert Cherry Civic Center in the total amount of $3,034.03 and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract modification and all documents related to same. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a grant application and all documents necessary to apply for a cybersecurity grant through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security in an amount not to exceed $50,000. A municipal order accepting the bid for sale to the city of Paducah, one three-quarter ton service truck and one one-ton pickup truck in the total amount of $168,496 for use by the Public Works Department, Maintenance Division, and the Paducah Floodwall Department respectively, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. A municipal order establishing policy for use of spending credits toward the purchase of certain benefits such as health, dental, or vision pursuant to the city's group health insurance plan for the 2025 plan year. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for a strategic health risk advisor and strategic benefit placement services with Hub, formerly Peel and Holland, for administration of the city of Paducah's health insurance in an amount of $81,900. A municipal order authorizing an agreement for administrative services with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield for the group health insurance plan for the city of Paducah, Kentucky for the 2025 plan year, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents relating to same. A municipal order approving and adopting the comprehensive health insurance benefit plan premiums, the vision insurance plan premiums, and the dental insurance plan premiums for calendar year 2025 for employees of the city of Paducah, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. A municipal order accepting the rates for stop-loss insurance coverage, authorizing an agreement with Voya Financial Advisors, Inc. for the city of Paducah, Kentucky for the 2025 calendar year, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents relating to same. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an application for an FY 2024 Kentucky League of Cities Safety Grant in the amount of $3,000 for partial reimbursement of sidewalk repairs and improvements, and accepting any grant funds awarded by KLC, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same.
So moved?
Second.
Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Gess.
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll take G, and I would ask you to read that, and then we'll, we'll discuss it.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Execution of a Release of All Claims Against Kenneth Flannoy and El Camino Logistics LLC for Damages Incurred to the Robert Cherry Civic Center and Ratifying the Mayor's Signature."
I'm sorry, so moved?
Second.
Just a question I had on this. I know that that was a little contentious to drug out as far as trying to get our reimbursement. Was that, did that cover our entire cost of the damage?
No, Commissioner, great question. So just for the public's knowledge, this is related to the accident that happened in '22 where a driver ran through a stoplight, hit another vehicle, and then as we were getting ready to, to start construction, reconstruction, renovation on the Cherry Civic Center, those vehicles ended up into the side of the building. Instead of having to drag out and go to court, the damages that were related specific to that incident were about $175,000. There's two parties, Flannoy is one, we settled for 150 of that 175. We are working with other parties to collect the remainder of that balance.
Ah, okay. Does that also include the legal expense?
The up to, no, that is just the, the regular, and so we wouldn't be able to, to ratify under or collect under the legal expenses side of that. So we did go to, so we'll be out of pocket a little bit there, much less so than had we gone to court over it. There were multiple parties. Their total insurance that they had was actually, ours was the first part of it to, to get settled, and so then the, the balance of that, a couple million dollars that they had on their, their plan and their premium. And so we, we went that, when we timed it out and, and working with legal, that, that was in our best opportunity to, to recover those expenses.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, then we have some ordinance.
We got a vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Call roll, please.
Commissioner Gess.
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye.
So we now have some ordinances to adopt. We read them two weeks ago. I'll ask the city clerk, please read the first one.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Approving and Authorizing the Execution of an Interlocal Cooperative Agreement with McCracken County Fiscal Court, Paducah Water Works, Paducah Power System, Paducah McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency, and McCracken County Property Evaluation Administrator for the provisions and maintenance of the geographic information system for the mapping of McCracken County." This ordinance is summarized as follows. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement which adds the McCracken County Property Evaluation Administrator to the current interlocal agreement between the city of Paducah, McCracken County Fiscal Court, Paducah Water, Paducah Power, and Paducah McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency for the provision and maintenance of the geographic information system for the mapping of McCracken County. This agreement allows the PVA to provide in-kind services for the benefit of GIS in lieu of payment as was required by all other members.
So moved?
Second.
So we talked about this two weeks ago. Anybody have any questions? Okay, I'll ask the city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Gess.
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye.
I'll ask the city clerk to please read the next ordinance.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 78 Personnel Actions, Articles 2, Benefits and Leave, and Article 3: Compensation of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah of Kentucky." This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance removes any language in either article that conflicts with the, with and/or is addressed by collective bargaining agreements in which the rights and/or benefits may be different than those offered to non-union employees, removing any language specific to 911 employees, as such language was only applicable when 911 was a standalone agency, adding language that allows part-time employees who work on designated holidays to be paid at time and one-half their hourly rate, including language that requires employees to follow HR 21 sick leave policy when requesting sick leave, defining the total amount of time fire department employees working 24-hour shifts may be paid while on military leave, updating the section relating to deferred compensation plans to include all deferred plans to which the city allows its employees to participate, and adding language to allow each department to define specialty pay.
So moved?
Second.
So we also discussed this a couple of weeks ago. There was a lot of changes, and some of them had to do with language, and we made some adjustments. Stephanie came up and made a presentation. I think we all had a chance to ask questions if we, if we wanted to, but want to make sure if anybody's, Stephanie's here if we have any other questions about it. I think you can call roll.
Commissioner Gess.
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye.
Okay, we have two 911 ordinances to read, adopt.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Approving and Authorizing the Execution of an Interlocal Cooperation Agreement Between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and the County of McCracken, Kentucky for the Provision of 911 Services." This ordinance is summarized as follows. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with McCracken County which adds language to the current interlocal cooperation agreement for the provision of 911 services that establishes a joint appeals board which will be responsible for hearing those appeals of classification of property after review and denial by staff.
Still moved?
Second.
This is the joint appeal board. Anybody good? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
And the last ordinance.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Repealing Ordinance Number 2024-068816" and adopting a new ordinance establishing and imposing a fee on all occupied real estate parcels located within the territorial limits of the city of Paducah to facilitate funding for the provision of joint 911 services as more fully set forth in the interlocal cooperation agreement between the city of Paducah and McCracken County. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city of Paducah previously adopted an ordinance establishing a parcel fee on all occupied real estate parcels located within the territorial limits of the city of Paducah to facilitate funding for the provision of 911 services. Subsequent thereto, it was determined that all appeals filed by citizens for reconsideration of classification of property should first be considered by city staff, which would prevent the joint appeals board from having to convene to hear those appeals that staff can resolve by granting the requests made in such appeals. This new ordinance adds language to the previously enacted ordinance to that effect.
So moved?
Second.
So city manager, would you just tell us what the difference between this ordinance and the first one is?
So when, they're virtually the same as it creates that joint appeals process. This one, though, adds the language to the order that was passed or repeals that we added in another step. That allows for an administrative review before having to convene the joint appeals board. So, city staff, county would do the same on their side. Is that if somebody came in to appeal and they had the documentation that says, you know, it was listed as a commercial property, it's truly residential and they can prove that, no sense of waiting the time to convene. Staff can make that determination. It speeds up the process to affect that appeal.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Call roll, please.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, the next order of business that we have is a discussion item, and our Director of Planning, Carol Gault, is here with a representative from the Main Street Board, and she wants to discuss Main Street and the future of Main Street and how she's seeing things.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that opportunity to be with you tonight, and good evening, Commissioners and City Manager and City Clerk. You know, most of you all know that I have a long history with Main Street. I started working with Main Street in the late 1990s, and that's where Jeff Cantor and I first met, and I appreciate you recognizing him tonight, Mayor, because he's put in a lot of time and a lot of dedication to downtown and the Main Street program. So as we start this discussion, I'm going to click through a few slides and then David Wilkins and I are going to tag team. David's serving as the Economic Vitality Chair right now. So I'm going to go through the first few and for the audience kind of talk about real quickly. Okay, Claudia.
Your arrows?
I'm here. There it goes. So real quickly, what is Main Street? And I know that you all are familiar, but a lot of people in the audience may not be. And it's a nationally recognized redevelopment tool that's used in downtowns, and it has a four-point approach, and design really deals with the aesthetics and what the historic fabric looks like in your downtown, and that's what Jeff did. That's how he started out with Main Street years ago. He brought his architect experience to help in downtown. And then promotions is the event component. It's what helps market the district and keeps the traffic flowing in the area. The economic vitality is really the recruitment. It used to be referred to as economic restructuring because years ago, as malls came about, many businesses left downtown. They moved out to the mall area, and so they had to find ways to restructure the downtown to get it to be a vibrant place again. That's where economic vitality came from. And then the organization component really talked about the political will and the whole organization as a whole. So that's the four-point approach. And Paducah has a long history with the Main Street organization. Some of you may remember in 2010, you were a Great American Main Street Award winner, and that is Bruce Brockenbauer was Chair of the Board at that time, and he and Chris Black are there receiving the award. And then that was right as it had come into the city. It had been a nonprofit since it started in 1989, and then it came into the city in 2009, and this was the following year. But this is the best way to explain to you what a Main Street program can do. If you look at that picture on Second Street in 1989, that was the year the Main Street program started, and then that is what it looks like today. So with strong partnerships and a concentrated effort, it's amazing the difference that you can see. Part of what it does is it creates investment, and you can see that was probably right about the time that it came into the city. There'd been a strong recruitment effort to get some anchors downtown such as Hoopers and Do's and some of those corner stores is what we would refer to them as Do's, but we were looking for those anchors and there was a strong recruitment effort at that time, and that was the result of that. At that point, it was still a nonprofit. But that may bring you to the question as to why we're here today, and I'm going to tag team it and let David talk about it from this standpoint on.
Thanks, Carol. So, you know, why are we here today is the Main Street's the heart of the city as we've always believed, and to be, you know, the mission of Paducah to be one of the best cities in this country, you know, we've got to have a great Main Street. And so what can we do to spur more and more excitement, vitality, commerce in downtown? And we put this goal together. Is there a way that we can organizationally change to be more successful in some of those initiatives that Carol defined? And how do I hit a button here? But today, the Main Street program is a part of the city function, and historically it started as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit entity. And today, if you go across the country, most of these organizations that support Main Street programs are 501(c)(3) organizations. I think in Kentucky, we're one of five, I believe, that are still a part of the city government. All the others are nonprofits. And so there's a lot of history about the additional flexibility and opportunities that exist if you're outside of the government entity to run this organization. And so as we were continuing to look at this, we're saying, yeah, there's probably, there was probably logic of why it was taken out at the time and brought into the city, and at this point in time, there's probably a lot of logic why it may be very successful if we try to move it back out. You know, if you're a 501(c)(3), you have more flexibility about hiring employees. We can probably, quite frankly, pay more to recruit some really high caliber talent to help us in this endeavor. Contracting's a little bit easier, and particularly around fundraising and financing of events and promotions, the 501(c)(3) simply gives you flexibility that you don't have in city government. Now, the way you have to fund this is, you know, the city would still have to make a contribution to help fund this, but the entity's got to, in essence, self-fund a lot of this stuff. So the big question is, and the question that it really needs to be explored is, is the community really ready to step up to this? Because particularly from a board perspective, the board goes from an advisory board to really an operational control board. And so, you know, we've got to find leaders in town who really want to step up and say, you know, I will take personal ownership and leadership of trying to make this happen. Right? So that's going to be real key. The businesses downtown have to step in. You know, it's sort of, if you're in a 501(c)(3), it's sort of a zero-sum game, so to speak, you know? So, you know, there's only this much money, and we're going to all have to look at, you know, the issues that we're trying to solve and solve it within our budgets, which is a little different than, you know, sort of sitting back and, you know, asking the government to step in and solve all these problems. So it's a different kind of model. So there's definitely got to be a process that the community looks at and tries to figure out how to do this. And the other big issue is simply the devil in the details of doing a transition. This is a pretty big change, you know, because it has been in the government for, how many years? Since 2010. So, you know, there's just a lot of detailed process in terms of how do we deal with the different touch points and the different city functions, literally how much money would be contracted, how would you contract it, the controls you want to put in place to make sure that, you know, it's contracted in a way that you're very comfortable with the stewardship that you're expecting out of the organization. So there's still a lot of details that need to be worked out. And so, you know, we're not here saying, you know, this is our recommendation to do this. What we're really here to say is, you know, can we have the opportunity to now socialize this in the community and then come back with a detailed plan? And, you know, so our thoughts on socialization is we'd have some listening sessions. We'd obviously need to spend time with all of you guys and gals and talk about how this would potentially work, and then really work through some of this details with the city manager and its staff on, you know, sort of the operational components of it, and then lay out, you know, a transitionary plan, you know, that would then make this happen over some type of timeframe in next year. So that's sort of the, did I hit all the points? So that's sort of overall thoughts, but we sort of just wanted to open it up for, you know, questions you may have.
I think it's a great item to discuss, so I have some thoughts, but.
I think it's a great idea. I think it's really good because the merchants that have invested their money downtown, property owners, they're really vested in how successful it is, and it's so much better for them to have the power, you're transitioning some of the power, a big chunk of the power over to them, to create their own marketing concepts and all that. I think that's really good. Otherwise, the city's doing it, and they're our customer, but it's, no one understands what the customer needs more so than the customer. So, but I do realize it'll require some investment of the businesses and property owners downtown. I think that's the way it should be because they'll be able to reap the rewards of their successful efforts. So I think it's a great idea to explore.
What does you mean by budget defined by ROI?
Great. I should have explained it better. It's simply, in a government setting, you know, you allocate the budget every year, and, you know, beginning of the year, this is the budget, and this is what you got to work with, right? And so in a nonprofit, the budget is a combination of some of the money that the city would provide the entity, but a lot of it's going to be fundraising money or other money that businesses may contribute. So, you know, the money's not going to be there unless people believe that they're going to give a return on investment on their money, is the point. So, you know, somebody can turn around and say, let's go have this new music festival downtown, and it's great, you know, and, but it's going to cost $300,000 to do it, and everybody go, whoa, okay, maybe I don't want to do that. Right? So, you know, so that's what I meant by budgets really defined by ROI. You know, every initiative's going to have to sort of, you know, fund itself.
Stand on its own.
So would you look at it like the employee, I guess you would have a Main Street employee, and then your board, as running those events and organizational, like any kind of festival for the sponsor, for fundraising for you? And are you looking at dues, that businesses would all pay dues, or?
Well, we haven't.
You want to explore on that, I guess? Is that what you want to do?
That's the thing. So, yeah, we haven't thought through all that. Initial thoughts is dues may be a small component, but that's not the primary funding model. But to answer your question, yes, these employees that would be hired to be working in Main Street, they'd be responsible for planning out the promotional event calendar for the year, and, you know, they'd bring that to, you know, this commission, and, you know, we'd be looking at that, and then we'd have to create teams, just like today with Barbecue on the River and, you know, some of the other festivals. There'd be people contracted for to, in essence, put the plant, put that festival together and that type of thing. And so some of them may make money, some of them may lose money, and, you know, that the entity has to manage those puts and takes to make sure that, you know, it all balances out at the end.
So would you, I'm sorry, I just said one more. And would you foresee accreditation,
which I think is important and that we've had and lost and had, and I'm not, I don't, I think we've lost it again. I'm not really sure on that part. Would you see that as a priority?
Well, I think moving to this model and managing those four pillars that Carol laid out would get us the accreditation again.
I think part of the problem that we may be having now in sustaining accreditation is that all four points aren't functioning the way that they should be. The organization component, and Jeff can probably speak to this, I'd ask him to stay a little later because I thought he may be needed, but he can probably speak to this better than anyone. As long as he's served and it's been as a city entity, the organization component really hasn't functioned. They have been able to do what little bit they could to try to meet that accreditation standard, but it really doesn't function in the way that it should. And the way that it should is it's the heartbeat of the organization. You know, it has to do with the way that the board members are appointed and what their functions are, how they work in the committees of the four-point approach. It has, they create a work plan and they raise money, and that helps with the health of the organization, and that true organization component has not functioned. So that's been part of the problem with accreditation is that you've kind of had to limp along to check the boxes.
Okay, I guess I just would be, that would be part of what I would like for you to, when you're so looking at it, the answers is to try to determine, is that, would that be a goal?
Absolutely.
Is to keep the accreditation and to achieve that?
And one of the things I would also suggest is, as you define the relationship going forward, if the city decides that this is the route that the organization should take and that there is enough stakeholder buy-in, that we know that the city will still have to have a contract for service with that organization, and I would outline that and say, if you want to achieve and meet our goals, then accreditation is a goal that you have to achieve.
And that may just be mine, but if we all did, yeah.
Yeah, no, of course.
As you move forward, if a merchant decided that something wouldn't be advantageous for them, would they have the opportunity to opt out? Or how would that work?
Well, those are some of the details we got to work out, right? So, yeah, you know very well, you never get 100% participation in anything, right? So, but there would literally need to be monthly, weekly, name it whatever, meetings with merchants on the plans for the year, you know, and the different activities, and, you know, I've been around long enough to know that some of these, some of the events aren't going to, you know, really help certain merchants in their business, but some really will, and so, you know, you just have to balance that out. So that's why the director position or the leader that we put in this group has to have that skill set, you know? So, you know, they have to have a skill set of, you know, working with different types of organizations. You got to have a fundraising mindset. You've got to have an economic development mindset. So, you know, it's a complicated job, you know, to lead this type of organization. And, you know, we had the fortunate of having the state here a few weeks ago, and, you know, talking to a lot of the different organizations across the state that perform these functions, and that's the characteristic you see in the leaders in those groups, is they have those different skill sets and, you know, they have to manage multiple complexities to try to make their organization work.
So, you know, I agree, leadership is really a key element here. You know, you're talking about trying to, assuming you go in this direction, you know, finding somebody who's, you know, who really kind of walks on water, you know, is what you're looking for. It's tough, you know, but I did call on, I visited a lot of businesses on Broadway today. today, you know, trying to, you know, just keep my ear to the ground on a lot of things and, and I think that people, I mean, I think they think that Main Street is important. I think that they, you know, the more successful businesses downtown understand, you know, very well that it's up to, it's up to them to generate, you know, their, their revenue and their profitability, but really the city's role or Main Street, you know, is really just to create activity, you know, to give them an opportunity to try to, you know, try to attract some people, you know, who are coming downtown for other events into their businesses. So it's kind of a, you know, a partnership. I would ask that in this investigation or this next step that you all are going to go through, that you do a thorough job of not only talking to all the commission here, but some key leaders in the, in the, in the community. I'd also, I think it would be good to look at what some other communities have gone through, how they arrived at decisions, you know, sort of the good, the bad and the ugly. You know, there's, you mentioned there's five communities or one of five that are still city, city managed and, and I'm not, I'm not sure exactly why, they haven't branched off, but, but I think in your due diligence, I think it would be really a good idea to try to take enough time, you know, to get, to get all the information and then, and come back and present it to us. But I think, I mean, I don't personally have any problem with you guys going to the next step and really trying to come back and make a recommendation.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you for that because that, that will be the next step and, and, you know, I think it's been, Jeff could probably speak to this if, if, I don't want to put him on the spot, but I think it's been very difficult.
He's already standing.
But they've been functioning basically in advisory role and, and it's not to step on anyone's toes, but there's a big difference and a big shift in what will, will take place. But I, I think Jeff could probably speak to it better than any of us. I'm just going to turn it over and let you do it, but I do want to recognize, Robin is back there in the back and she's been very quiet and she always comes to our merchant meetings and she, she came tonight and it's those kind of interested parties and those people that are very vested in downtown that I think it'll make the biggest difference for. Go ahead.
Let's hear from the new Duke.
I've been honored to be a part of the Main Street organization, started in 1999 as a design committee member, just a lowly design committee member, was kind of roped into that through a coworker at the firm I'm at and was put on the board in 2017 when Melinda Winchester was, was Main Street Director. It's been the honor of my professional career to, to serve in this capacity, to serve on the Main Street Board in the last two and a half years of service chairman. I'm stepping away not because of any opposition to this change, I fully and wholeheartedly support this effort to move this in a new direction. It's just the last two months of my family's life has put things in perspective and this is something that, that my term ends October, August of 2025 and it was just time to step away. But the challenges with it being in the City of Paducah, with, as an entity within the City of Paducah, it is such that, and I think Carol's already mentioned it, it's, it's a challenge. We're, the, the board is, is limited in our ability to, to, to do things where it's hard to, to find board members sometimes who, who want to do this as an advisory role. So I think, and honestly, Kitty Dugood, the State Main Street Director, has, has championed this move for us for several years. She has been a supporter of this, this move because it works. It's how Main Street started nationally years ago. It was a 501(c) organization and that's how it was organized and how it's operated in most of its communities around the nation. And so, you know, we, we look forward to this, we know there's challenges ahead. They, I guess, I'm on the board for another two weeks. We, they know there are, there are challenges ahead in this transition, but, but I feel like this is best for the community that we so dearly love, so.
Thanks Jeff and I think the community's been, you know, a lot better off having you serve us, so thank you. So any, any other questions from anybody? Okay, thank you for being here. Okay, and go forth.
A lot of work in two weeks to be done.
Okay, comments from City Manager?
Mayor and Commissioner just wanted to, to make you aware in the public, I believe Commissioner may already be aware, is that on our workers' comp, you know, we were talking about insurance and, you know, we didn't talk about workers' comp insurance, but kudos to our team for us helping, helping us realize a mod rate of less than one. We're going to have a celebration about that, a citywide celebration. That is a big deal that we got to that point. Stephanie and her team in HR, all of our executive leadership team of making safety a priority and again, and why that's a big deal is that not only does that mod rate drop, but that means our cost and savings and those public dollars can be used elsewhere. And so I just wanted to call that out and say how proud I am to be part of the team that's, takes safety to that level and, and we're excited to be able to celebrate that with the team in a couple of weeks. And we'll, we had planned on a date coming up, but that's had to change and be a little flexible, but we'll get that out to you so when we celebrate that with the team.
So I just want, I want to weigh in on that as well because when I was first elected, when Jim Arton was still here, Jim came, came to me and, you know, we had a, you know, reduced staffing, you know, we, we were in COVID and, but Jim came to me and he said, we need to hire this person in HR to manage our workers' comp. And he showed me some statistics, you know, on injuries and claims and filings and, and, you know, I was, I was a doubting Thomas, you know, but this, because it was very unusual because we, we had reduced staff, you know, during COVID and he was saying, you know, we got to have this person. And so, you know, we did and, and this is the fruits of our labors. So it's, it's panned out really well, so. Any other comments from Commissioners? Okay, I would ask the, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Gass?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.